All right, good evening, welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. I here at home, actually don't have my agenda in front of me because it's on my computer, which is going through an update right now, so Patty will start reading out the agenda items tonight. So if you're wanting one minute, that's why.
So do we want to start with the pledge, Mayor?
Yes, please. And can I just say, if everyone could just follow along with whoever's saying that, because when everyone starts chiming in. We'll be there in spirit.
He's already standing in front of the flag, he'd be a good one to do it.
Here we go. And to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
So the first item on the agenda is a disclosure of conflict of interest?
Next.
No one has a conflict?
No.
Okay, and the next item is the approval of the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Any discussion?
Patty, roll call, or yeah, everything has to be roll call, right?
Yep.
Sorry, I'm trying to figure this out, how this works between me and you right now.
Right, okay. Feel free to stop me at any time. Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. So the first item under unfinished business is ordinance ninety-two, two thousand twenty. An ordinance providing for amendment to solid waste ordinance, be it enacted by the Waterville City Council, acting as municipal officers as follows, that the solid waste ordinance, one dash four subsection B three, be amended to include mobile home parks in this subsection.
Yeah, any discussion? I guess we can take a roll call.
Counsel Morris?
Oh, no.
Counsel Morris, you're on mute.
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is order ninety-five, two thousand twenty, an order providing for acceptance of a main health access foundation grant, be it hereby ordered by the Waterville City Council, acting as the municipal officers, that the city accepts the thirteen thousand four hundred dollar award from the main health access foundation to purchase a fit testing machine for use in the fire department, and be it further ordered that the fire chief be authorized to complete all required paperwork necessary to complete the grant award and be further authorized to extend an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand four hundred dollars to complete the project.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call, please.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is resolution one oh three dash two thousand twenty. This is a resolution providing for authorizing issuance of a marijuana cultivation license to Theory Wellness of Main Cultivation LLC. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville, acting as the municipal officers as follows, that the City Council hereby authorize the issuance of a marijuana cultivation license to Theory Wellness of Main Cultivation LLC, twenty Industrial Street. Be it further resolved that approval from code enforcement and the fire department, along with all outstanding personal property taxes be paid as a condition for the license to be issued.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
And I believe we have those folks with us here tonight, is that correct?
Yes, Brandon Pollak is on the line, and if you'd like to ask him questions, he could certainly speak.
Great, and I just kind of like to give an intro. Oh, there, there he is, I'll let him introduce himself.
Good evening. Yeah, good evening. Thank you for inviting me to the meeting. Especially in these sort of difficult times, very much appreciate the chance to answer any questions about our proposal. Our, our company Theory Wellness, we started in Massachusetts. We currently have several facilities down here, both medical and recreational cannabis facilities. We employ about two hundred and twenty people here in Massachusetts. I'm a Colby alum, so I have ties to Waterville, I started my first business in college there, so we found an excellent property to have cultivation, manufacturing, and retail at, at twenty Industrial Street, and we're looking to, you know, invest and hire probably fifteen, thirty local folks to operate a business. We have experience, I've been doing this about six years now, and happy to answer, you know, any questions about the operations, about what we're, what we're proposing.
Great, and I just want to say that we were able to catch up last week, and I appreciated the time. So everyone else is aware, one, one of the reasons Waterville is having this new business come and come, and I frankly go to a place where we need, it's a perfect spot to have some little revitalization and rebuild on, on some buildings, is because we actually, we already had an ordinance in place, and so I think that, you know, you, I was not on the marijuana committee, but some of you were, and to you and all the private citizens that were on that committee and put countless hours and a lot of time and effort to craft something. That at the time was just, just a kind of theoretical in your heads, this is, this is the result of that. All of that work was that, here's a new business wanting to come to Waterville for that forward thinking, so kind of want to commend you guys that, that have worked on that, and hopefully be welcoming you to Waterville, I would encourage everybody to, to do the same. Is there any, any questions from the councils?
From the council?
Right here.
Right.
Oh, sorry Sid, I can't see you, you're on my phone, I'm sorry. I don't have the, I don't have the full screen view here, go ahead Sid.
Yeah, I haven't been on the marijuana committee myself with Jennifer, I wanted to welcome you, Brandon, and your business to the city of Waterville. I'm very excited to have that part of our city on industrial road, you kicking off a little bit of revitalization there. I'm definitely excited about the jobs, definitely excited about the tax revenue, so it's, it's very much a welcomed business, and I think you will do very well there. And this was the whole idea of drafting a marijuana ordinance and making this, making this, you know, a welcoming place for this type of business in these areas that are going to be instrumental, I think, and going to be good for a lot of people down the road, so welcome to Waterville.
Thank you, yeah, certainly appreciate the work that you folks did on the ordinance, it's very forward-thinking, and one of the few communities that had put forth something earlier in the stage of this business in the state of Maine, so it is very helpful for us to find a city that had that foresight.
Plot.
Plot.
Okay.
Just a couple of technical questions, is the reason that we have three items on the agenda because of the, you're doing manufacturing, growing manufacturing and retail all in the same place?
That is correct, Counsel Frankie, there are three separate licenses that need to be issued, so we included them separately on the agenda.
Great, and also is is this the property that we just sold?
No. Yes, I'm not, I'm not, we're leasing this property, so I'm not sure the history.
Excuse me, leasing, yes.
Mike Roy, I see you.
This property is the former Kai's Fiber Machine Shop, which is in back of the West Best Western Hotel. So, in terms of location, I think it's ideal, it's not obviously in a residential area, it's in a commercial area, commercial industrial area. So, I own away from a lot of things, so I think it's perfect. Location wise.
And anybody else? Okay, Patty, I think we're ready to roll call.
Yes. Counsel Morris?
Counsel.
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
He's gone.
There you go.
We count that as a yes when they go away then.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
Shall I catch up with Counsel Frankie when he comes back on this?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a six oh vote pending Counsel Frankie's vote.
Very good.
So the next item is resolution one oh four, two thousand twenty. A resolution providing for authorizing issuance of a marijuana manufacturing license to Theory Wellness of Main Manufacturing LLC. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville, acting as the municipal officers as follows, that the City Council hereby authorize the issuance of a marijuana cultivation license, oh, that should be mari-
Yeah, it should be manufacturing, Patty, you're right.
Yep, instead of cultivation, it should be manufacturing license to Theory Wellness of Main Manufacturing LLC, twenty Industrial Street. Be it further resolved that approval from code enforcement and the fire department, along with all outstanding personal property taxes, be paid as a condition for the license to be issued.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Patty, do you need an amendment for that, or is that?
I think because it was in the title, it's fine, it's really a Scribner's error, so I don't think we need an amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on this one, or can we move to the roll call? We'll move to the roll call.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie is Counsel Frankie?
I'm back, yes.
Hi. Counsel, we lost you on the last vote, so for the marijuana license, for manufacturing, for Theory Wellness of Main, how would you vote on that resolution?
I'm a yes on that one as well.
Yes, on that one as well.
Okay, so that would be seven zero.
That would be seven zero.
So now we're voting on
Now we're voting on the marijuana manufacturing license, resolution one oh four, and we're actually at your vote on that.
Oh, that's another yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Anyone objects, I'm going to make a motion that we take, read items one oh five through one thirteen by title only.
Great. Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes. So these are to read. Resolution one oh five through one thirteen by title only.
That's to be one oh eight.
We're on one oh five. We can do all these by title only, Mike.
The, you're talking about the public works equipment bids, right?
Right, but I'm just going to go ahead and take the last item for this gentleman, plus the mainly brews liquor license by title only as well, because those are
I'm sorry, I got you now.
It'll save, it'll save time.
In case we lose
Judging by the audio.
Okay, so I'll take a roll call on this then, Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Okay, so resolution one oh five, two thousand twenty, is a resolution providing for authorizing issuance of a marijuana retail license to Theory Wellness of Main Three LLC.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Patty, it looks like there's the same era in this one.
Yeah, instead of cultivation, it should be retail, yep. That's what happens when you cut and paste, my apologies.
I'm good. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Thank you, Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is resolution one oh six, two thousand twenty. A resolution providing for renewal of a special amusement license to SNL Productions Incorporated, doing business as mainly brews.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Is there any discussion? We will take a roll call.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is resolution one oh seven, two thousand twenty. A resolution providing for bid award library restoration work.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Discussion. Sit. Okay, we'll have a roll call.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Okay. The next item is resolution one oh eight, two thousand twenty. This is a resolution providing for a bid award, single axle dump truck with accessory equipment.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Discussion. Okay, Patty?
I believe Counsel Frankie has his hand up.
I can't see your hand. I don't have my computer.
Okay, I'll just jump right in then.
Please do.
My question about all of these, all of the equipment that we're voting on tonight for the Public Works Department is, the city's looking to spend a more than a half a million dollars on equipment right now. I understand, Erica, that this is bonded money, but we're still taking a half a million dollars out of the city's checkbook at a time, and we don't know how much money is going to go into the checkbook over the next couple of months. I think we need to be very cautious, and I would ask if there's a way that we can postpone the, the purchase of this equipment for, say, let's say, three months to see exactly where we stand financially.
Is that a motion?
Well, all right.
I think you're looking for a little discussion.
Well, right, we can, if we can make a motion and see if there's a second, and then have a discussion.
Okay, I'll make that motion then.
Is there a second? I guess not. Okay.
I mean, I guess all I'll say is, it's borrowed money, we have no choice but to spend it on this equipment or something similar. We went through this last year, a lot of this equipment that we're replacing is so old that it's costing us tons of money to, to, in maintenance, some of these items have actually cost us more in maintenance over their life than what we paid for them in the first place. So, I, you know, I think it would actually cost us money to not move ahead and buy this equipment in maintenance.
Mike, I see you.
I, I very much agree with Counsel Thomas on that point about the maintenance cost. The other thing on a number of these pieces, and Mark Turner, correct me if I'm wrong, is we place the order for them, and many times they don't come in until three or four, five months later. So many of those things are going to take time to come in, and certainly a couple of them are critical for winter, the first one especially, the dump truck, which is, I'm sure, also a plow truck, so, on, some of these are pretty important for winter use.
And, and I just want to follow up with, with Eric and just say, is, when we say it's borrowed money, just for the public's understanding, we borrowed this a long time ago, this isn't like we're going out now to borrow it and then we're saying we have to spend it, it's just, that was something that, before COVID nineteen, we anticipated these needs and, and took that bond, so.
Last September.
Right, right, as part of the strategy of more frequent bonding, but smaller bonds, so that we don't have massive tax hikes like we used to, where you have the big jump, then you wait for the payoff, and then big huge jump. We were actually able to, the way it's been doing, and I would encourage, again, the city to continue to do this down the road, to keep on this pattern, because if you do, you're going to be able to stabilize your taxes much better than, than was done a long time ago.
Sidney.
Sidney.
Sid.
Yeah, I want to reiterate what Eric said and what Mike Roy said about the, about this equipment, if there's any department out of all of our departments that needs new equipment, Lord knows, it's Mark Turner's Public Works Department, because, I tell you, I see more broken down equipment, not only in the wintertime, but in, but in other seasons as well. He has spent a lot of money in maintenance on some of this equipment, very, you know, twenty-plus-year-old equipment. Well, he, he has kept relics going practically on wooden wheels on some of the stuff, so I do give him a lot of credit, he is a very frugal person with his department. This money was approved a long time ago, and again, like we said, it's going to take some time even to get this equipment in, in place and, and going, and I can't say it soon enough, and it's very, very much needed.
Anybody else?
Glad, guys.
Counsel Frankie has his hand up.
Thank you.
Well, that was very informative, and I think it was informative for the public. Thank you, thank you for making it clear why we're going to spend a half a million dollars. And I, I agree, Sidney, that a lot of that equipment is almost as old as I am, and does need to be replaced.
Anybody else? I think we'll have a roll call.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is resolution one oh nine, two thousand twenty. This is a resolution providing for a bid award, HD track loader with accessory equipment.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Any discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is resolution one ten, two thousand twenty. This is a resolution providing for a bid award, dual axle roll-off truck with accessory equipment.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Discussion. Take a roll call.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is resolution one eleven, two thousand twenty. This is a resolution providing for a bid award, two each, two-wheel-drive, regular cab trucks with utility bodies.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Discussion. Okay, we'll have a roll call, please.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is resolution one twelve, two thousand twenty. This is a resolution providing for a bid award, four-wheel, four-wheel-drive, double cab pickup truck.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is resolution one thirteen, two thousand twenty. This is a resolution providing for a bid award, one-ton, four-wheel-drive truck with dump body and plow.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. The next item is
Sorry to interrupt that, Patty, have we had any phone calls from anybody?
No.
Good.
Shall I plug on?
That was the only question I had.
Okay, resolution one fourteen, two thousand twenty. A resolution providing for support for build grant Main Street project. Be it resolved by the Waterville City Council, acting as the municipal officers, that the city manager be authorized to include one million dollars in the proposed two thousand twenty bond order in support of the Main Street build grant project. It is understood that this amount will be included in a list of other capital improvement needs when the city council considers a bond order this summer.
Move to adopt.
Tag it.
Um, I, I'll go, I think, well, clearly we're going to end up tabling this tonight, because I think there's some more work that needs to be done, but I just wanted to, this is a chance for the council to have an initial discussion about this. And part of honestly why we probably should wait is because there may be money in this next stimulus package that the federal government is working on, that may go towards these kinds of projects. And, you know, I, I just think things, things are changing quickly, so it might, might be wise to see what happens over the next weeks. Honestly, I'm also not completely convinced, in the long run, it will be as over budget as it looks like right now. The price of, of paving and roadwork, you know, obviously, a lot of municipalities are going to be putting that kind of work on hold, which may drive the prices down on some of this stuff, which we really won't know until we go bid on it. But I do think, you know, unfortunately, most of us weren't here in the initial phases of the planning on this. I think Nick and Sidney and Mike Roy are the only members of city government who are sort of in the application phase. So we are where we are now, and we could rehash everything that happened up to this point, and how we ended up with a project that's over budget. I think the important thing at this point is that this project moves forward. I think there's a lot of paving work that's going to happen in conjunction with this project, that would ultimately need to happen anyway. And if the city was to try to go it alone, or in partnerships with the state, we'd probably end up laying out somewhere in the neighborhood of this amount of money anyway, and all we would get was just the paving of those streets and not, not this project that's been in the works for three years, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and let other people comment.
I just want to say a few things, and one thing I want to say, while I have the opportunity, I, I've heard around the last few days, oh, you know, Mike Roy's coming to grab another million dollars from the taxpayers. Mike Roy, who was actually probably the most skeptical person when the city applied for this, and has been probably the most cautious through this, the city council voted The city council voted for this project. And the project is now for multiple reasons over budget. And the city manager is doing his job by coming to the council and saying, this is the situation. And this is what's needed if you guys want to continue with the project. And I just want to be, I think it's important to be clear and I know most of you are, but I think it's important for the public to understand that too. Mike's job is to execute the will of the council. He's doing now and he's telling us what we need to do. I agree with Eric that it's probably wise to be cautious a little bit and and say, you know, we have no idea how the situation could change. I do know that there's been a lot of whittling down of this project, over a million dollars has already been knocked off it to try to. Squeeze the scope of this. And we don't know what the final costs are going to be. We we can tell you based on estimates of current construction costs. So. I do think that one thing to consider. Is that and I've had this discussion with Mike, Eric, Mike, Morris, Sid, and maybe some others. That. If we're going to spend money, it should be on things as Eric said, that are the city's responsibility anyway. We know some of these roads have to be repaved. Some of the sidewalks are crumbling. If you go to Front Street, it's hazard. These are things that would have been the city's responsibility anyway. So as long as the money is allocated. To things that would ultimately be the city's responsibility. I think it's important to consider that it's still, you know, a twelve million dollar project. We're the only skin in the game that the city has. Is a million dollars and I know. Eric has also worked on with others on looking at how we could use a TIF to leverage one of the new Kobe buildings. That would more than than pay to offset this, so it wouldn't cause any kind of tax increase or or burden on the taxpayer. So. Those are just some thoughts and general considerations. I see Megan and Sid.
I do agree with you and I do worry that if we don't take this federal money that we won't get money in the future. That's one thing I'm concerned about. And it's worth noting.
Sid.
Yeah, I want to. Give a little insight on this too, from a business perspective and what's best for the city of Waterville and. I do compliment. Councillors, I think in the same, I was thinking in the same wave as Eric and and Meg and. I did have conversations with several people today. Chris Gons, who's head of the Central Main Growth Council, Kim Lynn Loft. Mid Main Chamber of Commerce, of course, Mike Roy, I've spoken to you and the mayor. And several councils as I as I speak about this, but they. I was involved with the build grant with. Mike Roy or the public meetings with the mayor. With all those different things and federal money like this notion and the hard work done by. Garvin Donigan on the as as part of the Central Main Growth Council and. And what he does in getting grant writing done and going through US Senate.
Sid, Sid, I just want to interrupt you real quick here. It is important though, and I'll let you go right back to it. I apologize, but it's an important time to stop. Garvin Donigan was for the Central Main Growth Council, but for the public to understand, he works for for us. That is who we pay. For our Office of Economic Development. So that is, that is the city essentially being involved. Go ahead, Sid.
Yes, and that's where we have skin in the game with this grant is the fact that we authorized. Him to go ahead and start the process and in achieving and accomplishing this grant of up to upwards of twelve million. So we're talking about one million dollars of over. Overages and that might not even be what it is, going back to Eric's statement. I think. I'm going to put a motion out on the table right now to table this until the. Until we can see and analyze the revenues that are available. I think tax increment financing like Eric and I are on. Have a can make a very big play on this and it will be no rise in taxes and that's exactly. I think everybody on the council wants to have and we need to look and have discussions with our partners. Which is Maine DOT and Kobe College and gets further analysis. And I'm sure board meetings and what discussions they have to have and we can whittle this down to a really reasonable amount of money. I do not.
I want to second, I want to second that motion while before we get away with it.
The only thing I want to say is I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to chime in before we.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm in agreement. I want everybody to have a say and it's it's, I'm just putting that motion out there. And I think everybody should is justified to have their say because this is something that is smack in our face and. And we and I really believe in the timetable of. We need to take our due diligence and our time to analyze this and look at all sources and. And we have time to do that. It's there's no hurry to do this. So. I think we have the discussion and we move forward and make the best decision possible on this.
I I think that's good and I think it's. I think it's also, yeah, I think we need to understand the full scope here. Yeah. Is there anybody else? I can't see your hands right now. Patty, I do have my agenda now. Back up.
Okay.
Patty, did you want to say something?
No, I'm happy to put off this spending money. That's been my consistent position since this COVID business started. It was as long as we're going to wait to spend money, that's I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I just have one last point. I mean, one to the, we are working on an amendment to the downtown TIF. The the current TIF expires in twelve years. And so we'd like the the buildings that have already seen improvements, we want to leave in the the current district. But we can maximize our revenues and get more out of this in the long run if we take some of the buildings that are going to see improvements in the next couple of years and put those in their own TIP district. And use those to fund this project and possibly the concourse redesign. And the the Castangway square piece has been removed from this and that'll be a separate discussion later on. And then the other question that I have and Mike and I have talked about this, I'm not entirely convinced that we need to borrow this money this year. This is a, you know, ten to twelve million dollar project. And if our share is a million, the question is, are we going to have to put money our share in? Now, or could we possibly wait until a year from now, two years from now to to actually borrow that money? And so we're going to be doing some more, having some more discussions about when when the city will actually have to outlay the money that we're, we'd be on the hook for.
Any other comments on the motion to table?
Do we know, do we have a timeline for how long it will be tabled or when it would come back up?
Until the tax is regularly scheduled.
Okay, so next meet, okay, good, okay. So not very long.
Right, yeah, I think that way it stays fresh. It's in front of us. It's time for feedback.
Okay, good. That sounds great.
Sidney, this is Andres.
Sid.
I also want to add to the tabling of the motion that the we allow the Mike Roy, the city manager to. Lead the investigation on where some of these revenue sources come and some analysis and he come back with a full specialized report on where he believes. All of the money that we can take, including the tax increment financing part is and and apply this to that. Yeah, I know that Mike, I'm not going to speak to you, Mike. I know that you'll speak what we talked about. But I do, his office is wide open to all of us to come into. So he can have one on ones with each of each of us as far as his analysis of this. And Mike, if you want to speak on that, go ahead.
Right, I I'm glad it's going to come back on June second. I hope that by that time. I can come back to you and say we found a way to bridge that shortfall in the project, the one point six million. That's my goal for June second. We do have to make a decision pretty soon about proceeding because we have a September. Deadline with a federal highway to present to them a finished set of plans and specs and cost estimates. We talked with them about extending that time into the fall and they said, no, they absolutely cannot do that. So at some point in June, we're really going to be faced with that do or die decision of can we support it and how much? So I will be back on June second and I look forward to talking with you on it. I don't mind any of these questions. Because a million bucks is a lot of money, especially since we weren't expected to be a financial player. Lots happened and of course, a lot that has happened is that five or six of you were not involved at the beginning part of this. So I understand that makes it especially difficult. The council has taken three separate votes in the past since two thousand sixteen to support this all the way along. So it's been a pretty consistent level of support from the city's elected leaders. Here we are kind of at an endpoint. So I realize how important it is for us to all understand how we got to this point, number one, and then how we can go forward.
Okay. I guess we can move to a roll call on the table until the next meeting.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayu?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay. And next is ordinance one fifteen, twenty twenty.
An ordinance providing for amendment to licenses and permits ordinance, be it enacted by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as the municipal officers as follows. That the licenses and permits ordinances be amended as shown on the attached.
Move to adopt.
Target.
Any discussion? Okay, I have a roll call, please.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayu?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Patty, Kevin Joseph get in touch with you.
Yes, he did. Would you like me to explain?
Sure.
Yes, Kevin Joseph of Guacamole's on Main Street has approached. Counsel Thomas and myself today to see whether the councillors would be interested in waiving cloture. To consider a liquor license for his business on Main Street Guacamole's. He has indicated that it's really just for beer and wine when people are eating lunch. He plans to close around six o'clock once things settle down here. And I indicated that it it requires a motion by the council to waive cloture. But that I didn't see any issues with it because he's a well-known businessman in the area. He already runs a business. With a liquor license at the you know who's pub, so I didn't see it to be an issue.
Motion to remove cloture.
Ten seconds.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayu?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. So this will be Resolution one sixteen. And it is a resolution providing for issuance of a liquor license to Main Street one oh eight LLC doing business as Guacamole's. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as the municipal officers as follows. That the city council hereby authorize the issuance of a victualist license to Main Street one oh eight LLC. Doing business as Guacamole's at one oh eight Main Street. Be it further resolved that, sorry, that approval from code enforcement and the fire department, along with all outstanding personal property taxes be paid. As a condition for the license to be issued.
Move to adopt.
Done.
Any discussion? Counsel Frankie.
Well, I just think this is an opportunity to demonstrate to the downtown merchants that council. Is looking out for their best interests and we're interested in them remaining as downtown merchants.
Agree. Anybody else? I will take a roll call, please.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayu?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed. Yep, so we're up to councillor updates.
I'll kick this off if I can. I sent you guys an email. I don't know if you've all had a chance to see it. This was really good news. Remember, we we just voted a week ago to block off the street and the concourse. In order to have some outdoor dining behind the lion's den and you know who's. Couple of years ago, we had tried to set this up and the original intent was to actually use that park that's kind of like a dandelion garden now. To to have some outdoor seating there. And. We weren't able to because the the state liquor inspector, the the Bureau of Alcohol said, no, you can't do that. You can't walk from the sidewalk over to the park. With alcohol. Jennifer Bergerin has done a lot of work in the last few days and. Has been able to obtain a waiver. And we will have that. She's going to forward that to the city. So Mike and Patty have that and. That means that they would be able to actually set up their dining in the park, which means we don't need to close down the street. Which means places like Kind of Like Federal. Will, I think, be much happier with that situation. So I think this works out for everybody. I don't know that it needs council approval. I think that somebody Mike can just say, since you guys already said there could be outdoor dining. But I think it's important that everybody, everybody has a chance to weigh in. So I just wanted to to bring that up. Is that right, Mike?
I agree. Yes, I agree. I think it's a better option than being in the street. Both for them and for people who want to come back and forth through the concourse. The park is very little used. So why not make it available for outdoor dining for businesses that are trying to do everything they can as as counsel Frankie said a few minutes ago.
I see Counsel Frankie.
Is there some kind of traffic control as part of this plan?
Not yet. I guess we'll we'll evaluate it and keep a close eye on it. I I I'm not, we're going to have to talk with each one of the restaurants and see just. What their experience for traffic back and forth. Yep.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Counsel Mayu has his hand up.
Yeah.
I agree with what Counsel Frankie said earlier. This is goes along with the spirit of the downtown. Small business is, as you know, has been on the forefront, splashed on the front page of the papers with this COVID. This is an industry I'm very familiar with that has taken a big hit, the biggest hit. Out of all the COVID industries affected is hospitality and restaurants. So, you know, I couldn't think of anybody. Kevin and Jennifer are both incredible business owners, very much involved in the community. And this would be, this would just be a great shot in the arm and I think it'd be great for the community and. Outlying towns to come in and make use of this small little park that has been nothing but really the Mount Desert of Waterville and. In that in that parking lot. So if we can make something out of it and make it an entertainment. So be it. I think we, you know, full speed ahead.
Great. Any other councillor updates tonight?
I just wanted, I just want to mention Travis Lejoy at Eighteen Below reached out to me today about also making accommodations for outdoor dining for eighteen below. I put him in touch with Patty, so I would imagine we'll be seeing something on our next agenda. Just wanted to give people a heads up and get it out to the public that that discussion is happening.
Thank you.
I have one.
Okay.
Julian Payne sent me an email and asked me to read it for the council. Dear councillor, I would like to lodge a formal complaint. That should be addressed at tonight's council meeting. The communication between below shows and electronic communication between all councillors. This means that councillor Meg Smith, who sent the email, conducted in a legal meeting. As as more than three, as more than three councillors were involved. The press or public were excluded. Having been a member of the school board, I never communicated to more than two board members at once. Additionally, the council chair gave a great speech about contacting him, not the city manager. I have sent three emails and phone calls and this poor excuse for a leader has never responded. It is time for the council to act like, council acted. It is time for the council to act like uh, council acted like adults, Julian Payne. He asked me to send it, he he asked me to read it, and I read it, because he's one of, he's one of my constituents.
Okay. So any other counselor updates?
Um, I just want to say something.
Sure.
First of all, I find it interesting that he singled out Counselor Smith, because several people have sent emails to all of the counselors.
Thank you.
I believe that, I believe the email chain started with the email from Counselor Foss.
Yeah.
Um, to all the counselors. The other thing I want to say is, with all due respect to Julian, when I, they, the thing that he's referring to, I actually was talking to the counselors and told them to, in the interest of saving Mike's time, to reach out to me. And third, for quite frankly, Julian has never been anything but rude to me. Um, and I don't have the time to deal with him, so I did not respond to him, because I frankly have had enough. And he's not in my ward. Um, and, you know, life is too short to let people like Julian Payne suck the life out of you, so.
So anybody else for a counselor update?
Counsel. I'd like to reply to that, just, just real quick. Um, the email string that he's talking about actually started with the next champagne.
I believe the media was on that, right?
I believe so.
And and so I I don't, I don't want us to get into a debate tonight about the emails, because that's a question for Billy, because there is a line where it becomes a public meeting, there's a line where it doesn't.
Right.
So, uh, but and I also don't want personal insults hurled back and forth with people on here who aren't on here. I think we should move on. Anybody else for counselor update? Okay.
I think Matt needs to talk.
Oh.
She's muted, though.
Thank you.
Mayor, sorry, we got a call in um about a comment on the build grant after the discussion ended. Uh, shall I share it now?
Please, yeah.
Um, so this was from Kathy Weeks, Ward one. Her question or comment was, in two thousand sixteen, the council was voting on accepting grant money. There was no discussion about putting in money. When the project started, who in the city was the driver of the project? What action did we have at the table for revisions? And where is the one million going to come from?
Sure. Um, I would, well, I guess the city still has to decide where the one million would come from, so um, that, that got tabled tonight, so that part got answered. Um, I was, this was, there was a lot of meetings, I went to some of them, I didn't go to all of them between various um. They were kind of big meetings where you had people from Colby, the State Department of Transportation, and the city, and usually there were several people, you know, like some, and sometimes it might have been just the engineering office, sometimes it could have been Mike Roy. So, um, that's, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I did not go, I was not involved in a lot of those meetings, but I think, Mike, you were. Does that sound accurate?
Yes, for better or worse, I was involved in all of them, and and there were a lot of them. I think we started in, in March, and we figured finished in November, something like that. Six months worth of planning meetings, city, Colby, all the downtown, well, I think just about all the downtown. Businesses were invited, I know Sidney Mayu uh remembers that. So it was a very big group that did the planning, so.
Oh, that, we, you talked with the, I'm talking with, there was also a ton of private meetings too, like up at State DOT.
Oh, yes, 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 a lot of those actual desire, detailed meetings. The planning meetings, I said, were in two thousand fifteen, and then in two thousand sixteen, the city council didn't take any vote on grants, the city council adopted a strategic plan for the downtown with four elements. One of those elements was about traffic um patterns and pedestrian safety. That's where the bill grant came in. In two thousand seventeen, the council took another vote to actually um support a two-way traffic change if money could be found. So that kind of formed the basis or allowed for the preparation of the grant, which came later, is a council that already said, we're in favor of changing traffic patterns, if anyone can find some money, let's do it.
Okay.
Sid had a question.
Okay.
Yeah, to reiterate that, all that planning with the bill grant, this has been a very slow and methodical and thought-out, well-thought-out process, like Mike Roy was saying, and this was something that involved many, many public meetings. I know that uh they were, like he was saying, six months, I think it was closer to a year uh that we uh were involved in some of these public meetings, and every small, all kinds of different zones of the downtown district and business, small business owners were invited to give their input and feedback on these public meetings, and they were, send out special invites for one night. They would uh, this section would come, and then another section would come. And yes, other meetings involved the Maine DOT uh, uh, some strategic planning with Colby College, some uh input from the public on, on variables, what we're looking at for aesthetics. I mean, the the list just goes on and on and on. Uh, the methodical thinking and planning and uh instrumental changes that we were all talking about was uh well-laid plans for this build grant, and when it finally came about uh through authorization from the council, that's when Garvin Donigan got heavily involved and was able to secure this mind-blowing grant that only comes around in a lifetime.
Okay. And any other counselor updates?
Counsel Frankie.
Counsel Frankie.
I just would like to make one comment about Ms. Weeks' uh uh question. I, I don't think we have fully answered all of the elements that were her question, was quite at an vault. Uh, would you be willing, Mike, to uh take a look at her question and see if you can develop a little more comprehensive answer that we can give when we talk about this uh at the next meeting? Since it's been tabled.
Yes, I really will, because I'm, I I'm very um, I, I regret that we can't have in-person meetings at this point in time. And if I thought we could get to that soon enough, I'd say, let's delay a final vote until we can have a meeting where we're all present in one room. Unfortunately, that's not gonna happen soon enough, so I'm very happy to answer her question. And please, if there are other people out there listening in or watching, you have a question, call or write, send an email, go through your counselor. Uh, this is a lot of money, and we want to make sure that people understand the history and the importance of it. We're at a critical time, we've had seventy-five million put into our downtown, and this is a critical piece, I think, to kind of wrap it up.
And uh, Mike, what, do we have plans to start reopening the city of it?
To start opening city, I'm sorry?
Reopening the city.
Uh, you mean City Hall and other facilities?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, we met this afternoon and laid out a um, a plan for City Hall as to how people could come in. So we'd like to um, starting next Tuesday, have what we call a soft opening. Uh, people who hear about it can come in, we're gonna have a person stationed at the door. Uh, it's gonna be, I guess, a lot like Nick going in Hannaford or Shaw's. Uh, at least someone to monitor how many people are coming in, uh, and if they want a mask, we'll have a mask. We'll have hand sanitizer there, they'll be encouraged to stay the proper distance away. Uh, we'd like to do it in a soft way next week, and then June first, open it up, uh, make sure people know about it. Um, so, yeah, we were met with Chief Massey and Chief Sessler this afternoon to map all of that out.
Wonderful.
Great news.
Thank you, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I think all of our employees are ready. And, I mean, some of it is selfish, because there's a lot of excise tax money out there that uh, that we need.
Yep.
And um, that's gonna give people a chance to come in and do it.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor Isco, I have another uh question or comment that has come in.
Okay.
Uh, this is from Julian Payne, uh, he's in Ward five. And he is explaining that the only reason he singled Meg Smith, Smith, is because that's the only email he received. The chair's response to constituents is poor, and the fact that the chair would behave that way is terrible.
Okay, do any other counselor updates before we do the manager's report? Okay, Mike?
On the manager's report, we still track our excise and state revenue sharing very, very closely. Uh, all of us were shocked yesterday when the state revenue sharing check came in. Way more, like a hundred thousand dollars more than last year at this time. Um, it probably is because the state revenue sharing, you know, which comes from income and sales taxes, lags behind. So it may be a month or two lagging behind.
Right.
But that, yeah, that was certainly a big uh boost. So we're tracking excises very carefully, we're certainly low in excise uh for the month of May. We have two weeks left, so I'm hoping by June second meeting, I can give you really a uh kind of a eleven-month report, because remember, June is our last month of the fiscal year, and I can let you know where we stand with both excise and state revenue sharing.
Okay, great.
A- and also the departmental spending, too.
Fantastic, Mike, thank you.
Yep, that's it for me.
Okay. There are more.
Other than to say, because we've been meeting every single Tuesday for quite a while, don't have anything planned for next Tuesday. Let's take a Tuesday night off and come back in June. How's that?
Sounds great. All right, most do you hear, anyone?
Pushing, pushing made.
Thank you.
Say it again, Mike.
Good night.
Good night.